You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to meet. One place I send my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marches for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, November 13 Fable City Council Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order at this time. This time we would ask that Pastor Ed Re- Bullard from Manor Church, the microsite, the Fable Dream Center will come forth. We ask that all would rise for the invocation. Please remain standing as the Boy Scout troops will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance following the prayer.
Dear Lord, we come to you today. Lord, we invite you into this place. Lord, you said that in your word, the highest form of leadership is to serve. And Lord, we just pray your spirit rests upon the council members, the mayor, as they go about the business of this city. Lord, guide them in wisdom and discernment. Lord, as we come out of Veterans Day into Thanksgiving Day, we thank you for those that put on the uniform to keep us free to meet and assemble and do everything that we do without worry of someone stopping us. Lord, we just thank you for your blessings. Be with us tonight and we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
You got it, son.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard dismissed.
Thank you, Boy Scouts, and we will come back to Councilmember Jensen to not only introduce you guys, but another scout troop we're blessed to have tonight. But Pastor Ed, I know you're a regular attendee of the mayor's coffee every month, you're a faithful member, as well as Manor Church, but you would like to tell the audience a little about yourself or your ministry?
Just a little bit, sir. My day job is as Chief of Forest Management at Forces Command, but on the weekends, I'm fortunate to be the pastor of the Manor Church microsite that meets at the Dream Center across from Festival Park. And our purpose down there is to provide a Manor Church service to those that live around Festival Park, many of which are homeless. So we provide a worship service, a meal, and then we try to tend to their physical needs as much as we can. So it's been a real blessing, seen a lot of lives changed, a lot of people take steps forward. And just invite you all to come down any Saturday at four. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, and thank you to Manor Church and Pastor Fletcher. You guys are doing great work in the community. Thank you for your help with the distribution of the relief items this past week. And so, thank you for what you're doing, thank you for joining us tonight. At this time, I will defer to Councilmember Jensen. Would you like to introduce our special guest?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could get pack troop number 756 from Crossroads Church to come up here, I understand you would like a picture with all of us. And if you come up here, we will stand up and get our picture taken with you. They were the fine troop that came up here and did the Pledge of Allegiance for us. Earlier today, we had troop 895 from St. Andrew's Church, and they came in and did a, got a little, talked about everything here in the city. So councilmembers, if we could stand up and get a picture?
We're coming together in the back. Stay here.
You know we don't leave you out. Come on here.
Oh, hey. Hi.
Troop 895, and they were here earlier and they're already gone. Would you like me?
FCYC.
Okay, and second, I would like to introduce Joyce Dupatani. I know I said that wrong, but Joyce just came back from a very exciting trip, and I'm sure she's going to tell us all about it. She's our FCYC member.
Hello. Hi, my name is Joyce Dupumbi. I am the president of the Fable Cumberland Youth Council, and this past week, we had the opportunity to attend the National League of Cities City Summit in Los Angeles, California. I just wanted to thank you all for continuing to allow us to attend these conferences alongside you all. One of the biggest things that I learned from this conference was really about youth advocacy and how important it is, how important it is for us young people to fight for the things that we believe and the changes that are going to be impacting our lives for the better. And this conference was the perfect opportunity for us to present one of our projects, Kindness Matters, something that we've been working on for three years, to present it on a national level. It was awesome to be able to speak with youth delegates from all over the country like California, Connecticut, and Texas, and present to them our Kindness Magic, our Kindness Matters project, and hope that they can host them in their own communities. I also really quickly wanted to mention that the Fable Cumberland Youth Council is hosting a military appreciation event on Thursday, November 15, from 6:30 to 8:30. We welcome you all to join us and celebrate those who have dedicated their lives for the betterment of this country. We're very, we're really looking forward to it, and again, we thank you all for your continuous support of the Fable Cumberland Youth Council.
Thank you. Let's give her a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, also in our discussions, I found out that her GPA was 4.4 GPA. Let's give her a hand for that.
Great job. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. So today, I had the pleasure of spending the day with Mrs. Williams' eighth-grade class at Nick Gerald Middle School, and they had the homework assignment of tuning in to tell me what color my shirt is, and I told them I'd shout them out. So, Mrs. Williams' class, I'll see you tomorrow, and I look forward to you telling me what color my shirt is.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to let Council Lady Jensen discuss the event tomorrow at the Greek Church, which is the 60th anniversary of the spaghetti dinner. I'm sure she's going to want to chat about that, but it was something my dad never missed. He was at the first one, and he was at every one of them until he passed away. Secondly, I wanted to talk about the care clinic. We cut the ribbon for their 25th anniversary, Councilman Cullerton and myself, and spoke of the great work that they do in the city of Fable. And the concern, the reason I wanted to bring it up tonight was, they told me that their patient population was down. So I want to encourage those that are uninsured, that may not want to go to the emergency room, the care clinic is available for you. Another term we use is working poor, so if maybe you have health insurance, but the deductibles are mighty high, and I want to encourage you to go to the care clinic. So I told them that I would definitely mention this on the air and to our audience here tonight because what they do matters in our community. There was faith over 25 years ago, and the hope was that they could serve those with dental issues and medical issues. To just be aware of that, I want to encourage those who know folks that may not have insurance to use, to go use the care clinic. Because their patient population is down, either we're doing better economically, but we also think there's a lot of folks that are underserved. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And just before we move in, we would ask that Ms. Rebecca Jackson, she would meet me at the podium, just before we share this great recognition, a very important point was brought up to me at a community watch was that we did not emphasize the importance of the community watches enough, and so I wanted to take this time to do that. You guys are the first line of defense. I would also encourage those in the audience and those that are joining us by TV, if you would please consider joining your local neighborhood community watch. There's a list of community watchers that are on the city's website, as well as the times that they meet, but we need your eyes and ears to help make this city and the community a better place. And so, community watchers, thank you for what you do, and we'll continue to shout you out every chance that we get because you're vital to our success. So, thank you. So Ms. Jackson, I'll meet you at the podium.
Mr. Mayor, wait, before you're doing that, can I talk about the spaghetti dinner, since Councilmember Dawkins brought it up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on your way down there. Just to remind everybody, the Greek Church has put in on their 60th spaghetti dinner, best spaghetti that you will ever have, and their prices have gone down to $6 a box this year in celebration of our 60th anniversary, and that will be at the Hellenic Center on Oak Ridge Avenue all day tomorrow. We sell about 13,000 boxes, so it's good.
Okay, this evening, we're going to read a certificate of excellence from the International City County Management Association. This certificate of excellence is presented to Fayetteville, North Carolina, for exceeding the standards established by the International City County Management Association in the identification and public reporting of key outcome measures, surveying both residents and employees, and a perfaciveness of performance management in the organizational culture. Presented at the 104th International City County Management Association, Baltimore, Maryland,
Just a quick thank you to the mayor and city council and all the senior management team who make this happen. Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. And Ms. Jackson is just being modest. She is doing an awesome job with data and all of the analytics and keeping us accountable, and she's our strategic planning director. She keeps us focused. The organization is running very well because of her contributions. So, thank you and your team, Ms. Jackson. At this time, would also during our recognition period, like to acknowledge Mr. Don Bennett, Torres for Tots, you and your organization. Would you like to come forth and?
Yeah.
Oh, you're signing to speak? Okay. Make sure we didn't miss you. All right, so we'll hear from you later this afternoon. All right, council, if we have no further announcements or recognition, we will ask for the approval of the agenda. Is a motion by, is a motion by councilman, were you voting, Mr. Here? Oh, okay, okay, coming up on consent. There's a motion by Councilmember Art, there's a second by Councilmember Wright to approve the agenda. Although, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that motion carries unanimously. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. Councilman Here?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to pull item 6.6, please.
6.06?
For presentation.
Okay, for a separate vote. Any other items on the consent that would like to be pulled? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve with the exception of item 6.06. Is that a motion, Councilmember Dawkins?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Councilmember Waddell? Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for votes. Madam Clerk, that is also unanimous?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned 6.07. Which one was your item? You'd mentioned 6.07?
I did, and thank you for reminding me. So, 6.07, since I can't really make a motion as the chair of the meeting, but if you would be so kind, if you could pull that item for a separate discussion, I just wanted to...
Like to pull 6.07, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Madam Attorney, how do we handle that since it was approved with this, with this new amendment?
Mayor, if it pleases the council, we can just have Jay Tolan to come up and give you a general Hurricane Florence update since that item was approved.
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Dawkins. I just thought it would be helpful if the citizens could hear just an update on the hurricane relief efforts and how that was going. But this will pertain to specific reimbursements from the city, not from individual members, but they'll explain that. But thank you. Councilman Here, item 6.06.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, yes, our director is coming up of Parks and Rec. I'm asking Mr. Gibson to come forward and just give us a brief highlight of, for our landscaping projects that are going to be happening on Bragg Boulevard, Ramsey Street, and I purposely left Merkison Road for last, to state last. I know this is our maintenance agreement discussion, well, item, but also just kind of give the folks a little heads up, as brief as you can, of what's coming down those entrances of those quarters.
Well, just to, just to let the public know, and thank you, Mayor and council, this has been something that we've been working on in the Gateway Committee. Councilmember Here has brought it to the forefront here. These are landscape improvements. Anytime that DOT does work in our city, there's an agreement that they have to enhance the area to beautify it, and 295 is being completed in phases. The Ramsey Street has been done, Merkison Road has been done, the Bragg Boulevard has been done, and now they go back to beautify it. A couple of work sessions ago, council approved a landscape treatment plan to upgrade those areas, those entryways, or what we call gateways into our city. So we wanted to make sure that council was aware of what that looked like and give the public an opportunity to see what that enhancement looks like. There's about $1.3 million worth of funding for those three gateways we're going to be spending about, or DOT is going to be spending about $1.1 to $1.2 million to improve those areas. And you can see what Merkison Road could look like, and then you have, the next one should be Ramsey Street and what they could look like, and that's what's on your agenda to approve tonight. And they would just be beautification areas, and if you've been through there, and let me tell you, a lot of people using 295. So you can see, and we've had some complaints about how it looks, so these are the opportunities to enhance those and show people what the city looks like entering those.
Thank you, sir. I think it's good that we give the community an opportunity to see what's going forward. One of my committee members just stated to me, on the diagram here, it shows the standard treatment, and if I'm not mistaken, I thought we did the enhancement.
But this is just an example. Yeah, this is not the, what it'll actually look like.
The second item.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure.
And this is just important to note, that this is just the first step
Yes, sir.
in the process.
Exactly right.
This just authorizes the agreement between the city and the state.
That's all it does, yeah.
Then next will become the design.
Exactly.
And then the bid, so.
Exactly right.
They'll get some more specific drawings, but this is a great point to, so that the people know what's going on in that area, that there's some things coming. And that's usually about 1% of the project for...
It's like 0.3% of the project. And they'll be going all the way down, so you'll have another opportunity to take the bite at the apple at Cliffdale, over on Rayford Road, and as it goes, all the way around.
Good. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all so much.
All right, thank you, sir. Look forward to it. All right, so Councilman Here, we've approved everything except that item.
Make a motion, Mayor, that we approve 6.6.
Okay, so...
6.06 agenda item.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Here.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Waddell to approve item 6.06, the landscape maintenance agreement. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.07, Mr. Hewitt, the Hurricane Florence disaster agreement.
Yes, sir, Mayor and council. Jay Tolan, Chief Financial Officer, will present what this item is and the city's efforts.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Hello, sir. Good evening, sir.
Evening. All right, so the agreement that you just approved set myself and Kim Toon as a primary and secondary agents for the whole FEMA Hurricane Florence reimbursement. So a very quick overview, the reimbursement rate is 100%. 25% comes from state, 75% comes from federal. We have started preliminary meetings with FEMA. We have a drop dead date of January 4, 2019, to establish all the projects for the city of Fayetteville to be considered for reimbursement. So once we get those approved projects, we will present the scope of work to FEMA, and then they'll approve it, once again, looking for the 100% reimbursement, and then we'll go through the process of fixing everything and applying for reimbursement.
All right, we do have a couple of questions, Councilman Dawkins, and then I had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. CFO. Question is, for the public, this is just publicly owned?
This is what the city owns.
Right of ways?
What the city owns.
What the city owns specifically? This is not all the damage that was done to private properties?
That is correct.
Okay, so just city-owned, not state-owned, not federal, city?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And that was pretty much where I was headed with it, that the public needs to understand there are different buckets of money, so to speak. There's public funds to reimburse for cleanup, infrastructure, those kinds of things. This is what this pertaining to, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then there's dollars for individual citizens who've had losses, and so that is a separate process. So just wanted to keep them posted, and I thank you for that. Any other questions for, yes, we do. Councilman Art, and then Councilman Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just so our listening public understands, we'll apply for this funding, and then it has to go through an approval process. Can you give a timeline for the approval process based on experience with Hurricane Matthew?
We usually look for within a three to four week turnaround time. We'll have a, currently, we're meeting every week with FEMA, so I'll make sure to ask that because they've changed a lot of their processes. Like, it used to be you would submit things by paper, now there's a portal, so they have assured us that things have sped up as far as the approval. But as far, we look for a three to four week turnaround time, but I will reach out to them when we meet with them tomorrow to see if that's still...
Yeah, I think, I think it would be beneficial for us to have a timeline. When Matthew occurred, it was not a three to four week turnaround for approval, and then, then you've got the gap between the approval and when the funding actually becomes available. And so, I think it would be beneficial to have, you know, that timeline so that we can provide it to the public. People want to know when your dam's going to be repaired. They want to know when the road's going to be repaired. And, and, and we're still doing repairs for Matthew, and so I don't want to set false expectations on how fast FEMA may or may not react. So I think it would be prudent to ask the question. And then again, if we need to get congressional assistance, like we had to with the dams, that we can reach out to our congressional representatives to help us with that.
And I think a correction to what, to detail more what I was saying is, there's an initial thing where they say, yes, this looks like it'll be reimbursed, and that's what I was detailed speaking to about the three to four week process.
Yeah, that's why I want to make sure people understand the whole process.
Correct.
So on Hurricane Matthew, have we, have we received all our reimbursement?
No, sir.
Okay. And I think it'd be beneficial to get an update sometime here, sir, on that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Councilman Chris?
Mr. Tolan, let me ask a question to further clarify for our listening audience, because you reference yourself and Ms. Toon. I guess what we're doing here is authorizing you to execute applications to FEMA and the state for reimbursement. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then what is Ms. Toon's role? Because you didn't specify. You simply said Kim Toon.
I'm sorry about that. She's a secondary, so, you know, like the vice to this.
And what does she do for the city on a daily basis?
Oh, she's a purchasing agent.
She's a contract agent for the city, right?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted the public to understand that you're the chief financial officer, and she's purchasing a contract. Go get the money for us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one more quick question. Councilman Art brought up something that triggered my question, which was FEMA's offering us some money for a homeless shelter, about $3.9 million, and that's a direct funding issue. Is this funding issue that you're going to be working on, all these plans, is it still going to go federal, to state, to county, to city, or is it going to be a more direct route to the city?
This specific funding is between us and FEMA.
And the federal government.
Right, and the federal. And then will you work with the state? Because the money goes to the state, so if it's a million dollars, $750,000 will go to the state, and then the state releases the funds to us with this particular funding.
Okay, so we're still going to, but is it going to skip the county this time, or is it got to go to the county, and then they write us a check?
To my knowledge, it doesn't go through the county for this particular funding.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So before I go to Councilman Wright, I did have a question. The step process that we had spoke to former Assistant Manager Ryanstein before he left, where it was a new way to apply for these public dollars or to kind of expedite it. Is that in this, in this plan that, well, you haven't submitted the plan that you, you haven't formulated the plan that you plan to submit. You asked for authorization to sign the applications tonight. Do you have a plan formulated that you'll be submitting for reimbursement already, or are you working on that?
We're working on that. This is for the, this is for the infrastructure, the, any type of buildings that the city owns. That's what this is preliminarily for.
Okay, so all public property, infrastructure, cleanup, debris?
Yes, sir.
reimbursement, those kinds of things?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, Councilman Wright?
Yes, there's several questions that I have, but I'm just going to be brief. I'm upset, and the reason I'm upset is because I don't understand the priority. Matthews happened two years ago or so, Florence hit us. I hear a lot about Florence, but there are people still displaced, and then buyback programs for Matthews, the funds has not come down. And I have to hear these people and see the discomfort of their lifestyles from two years ago. And I'm really worried if we've learned anything from Matthews, and if we have, can you help me to understand what we've learned from Matthews and that we're still dealing with, you know, the problems of Matthews, the payouts and the buybacks?
Mr. Mayor, please, I was going to answer that. There are several pots of money, as you and the mayor have alluded to. The one that you're speaking to is that has a grant mitigation program, and also earlier someone mentioned the Homeless Day Center. That is the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds. What we're dealing with here now are, for Jay and for Kim Toon, is that we have identified some sixteen projects, or thereabout.
Yes, sir.
And they total about ten and a half million dollars. That includes direct damage to roads, structures, buildings that we have, debris removal for vegetative debris collection, as well as for overtime and those issues. This is for that. But Councilman Wright, we all share, and I think the entire state shares your frustration with how long it has taken us to actually put dollars on the ground and help people get bought out of the homes. Many of them have been displaced. Many people maybe not have run out of other options, but also not only just the buyout, but also the elevation. That is working in the background at the moment, and it may be appropriate, as time permits, for us to try to get a more defined presentation specifically about Matthew recovery, which I think meets Mr. Arp's interest as well, for your December work session, but probably your first regular meeting in December, so that we can again televise that, and we'll have more information about that as well. But tonight, this is simply saying that Jay and Kim will be our points to access the money for about ten point five million dollars in projects that we have currently identified for Florence. But work continues, as you articulated, and needs to continue for the full recovery from Matthew.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you will. I just want to put on the record, for the Hollywood Heights Louis Street Bridge, I haven't heard anything about that. I mean, the people have been displaced, the discomforts of one entry into a neighborhood of that size. I'm very dissatisfied in the process that we were going, and the speed that we're going to get that bridge underway. There's no construction, there's nothing happening, and the money's been allocated, so I just want the listeners to know that we got it on record, and we want something to be done, update us on the bridge on Louis Street for the damage done in Matthews. We're still waiting.
And I think what, and just to clarify this just a little bit, I think what the problem was with Matthew, with the Louis Street Bridge, was that they didn't attribute it directly to Matthew, more so than where and to, but still, I share your frustrations about the residents in Hollywood Heights, and I think we need to follow that up with a call to DOT, who was handling the contracting of that, but separate matter, and I just wanted to make sure that they knew that this pot of money was for public infrastructure and roads, if I'm hearing it correct. But thank you, Mr. Ma, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Arp.
Yeah, I just, Mr. Manager, you can answer this. Just so everybody understands, when we seek reimbursement from FEMA, in this case, ten and a half million dollars for Florence, for infrastructure, we can't spend money in advance. We're prohibited from doing that, so we have to get FEMA to approve it, and then once it's approved, we have to wait for the FEMA money to arrive before we can begin repairs. Is that correct?
There are some protective measures that we can take, such as if you have a hole in the roof, you can go ahead and do some of those. If it is some emergency repair, but that time, as you can imagine, has to be very closely aligned to when the event occurred. But you're correct, in the large part, and what it looks like is that we have to identify the project, we develop a scope, do project worksheets, and then we negotiate that with FEMA, they make sure our numbers look good, and as long as we stay within the color of that project worksheet, then it can be one million, it can be two million or three million, but as long as we stay within the authority under that project, then FEMA will reimburse us seventy-five, and as the state has done previously, the state will then do the local match, which is twenty-five percent. So for protective measures, we can go on out and we will get reimbursed for that. But generally, what you said is absolutely correct. You have to work under the authority of the project, and FEMA has already been down here several times, been in contact with us. It is, as you can imagine, the storm the size of Matthew and clearly of Florence as well. They literally don't have enough people to do that. That's why we are really, a lot of hard lessons we learned during Matthew, but they're paying dividends now for us as we navigate this process in Florence.
Yeah, I just, I guess the point that I'm trying to make, Mr. Mayor, is that I want people to be cautious about the timeline. It's, we got the FEMA, we have the federal government, we have the state, and to get the reimbursement, there are different obstacles that we have to overcome before we can get that money released to us. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, and I voiced it at the, you know, the Chambers Annual Event, when we had the Secretary of Commerce there, of frustrations and the fact that we need our money, and I would like to, and you don't have to answer this question tonight, but I would like to see how much we are still owed from public infrastructure, the same process that we took through Matthew. He said that we have not received all of that. I think it was twenty-five million total. I would like to know what's short and where we are on that, and that can be a follow-up to this. I'll send an email to that effect, just to see where we are as we submit this and what the hangup was before, so we don't make that mistake.
And Mayor, Council, I will be out of the office on Thursday and Friday, but on Friday, at a Metro Mayor's Coalition, where the mayor will also be presenting on a kind of exciting loan program and a funding opportunity. But on Friday, we will also have Brock Long, who will be there, and I'll have an opportunity to sit down directly with him and others, communities affected, and be able to share with him the concerns that y'all have raised tonight.
All right, Council, we're clear on this? All right, so we'll need a motion to authorize We've already took care of that? All right, let's keep moving. It's such a prolonged discussion. All right, item seven point zero one, reports from the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation, annual report.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Andrew Pennick. I am the chairman of FCEDC. That's the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation.
Mr. Pennick, I meant to make an announcement before you get started.
Yes, sir.
If you have a cell phone that is not on silent, can you please turn it to silent? We are recording this via audio. Audio team has said that they would really appreciate the fact if we could turn those phones on silent for the time being.
I'll have to say, that was my cell phone going off earlier.
Wasn't calling you out.
That was, that was my bath time warning, and if I don't have my children in the bathtub, my wife gets very upset at seven thirty, so I'm sorry.
You're late, sir.
I am late. Again, my name's Andrew Pennick, and I am the current chair of FCEDC. This is Lindsay Allman. She is the VP of Operations, and Teddy Warner with Existing Industry, sorry, Business Development. We come to you guys annually to basically report on our update and what we are doing for business development and recruitment here in our area. Do you all have the slides in front of you? Okay. Doug? Okay, thank you. All right, we are a public-private enterprise. Basically, four tenths of our income is given to us by Fayetteville, four tenths by Cumberland County, and two tenths by the private sector. Obviously, our job is to increase the tax basis and increase employment. Right now, our latest statistics show that Cumberland County has the lowest unemployment rate in the last seventeen years, and I believe that figure is four point two. Yep. Right now, currently, we have four voting members from, sorry, three voting members from Fayetteville. That's Mayor Colvin, myself, and Bobby Suggs Jr. There is a pending request to add on an additional voting member that would actually help us represent more clearly your funding to us, a four-tenths. So what we'd like to do is four tenths, four votes for Fayetteville, four votes for Cumberland County, and then two from the private sector. Obviously, we have wonderful partners with us, those being FSU, Methodist University, FTCC. We certainly rely on those heavily. We've also got Fort Bragg Research Institute and Cape Fear Research Consortium. We certainly have a superior logistics location with our access to ninety-five, Class One rail, and deepwater shipping ports. And of course, we have Fort Bragg. Fort Bragg is helping us retain and get eight hundred and fifty local businesses that are performing over one billion dollars in prime contracts. One of the things that we are tasked to do is certainly go out to other communities, and basically, we're a part of eighteen industrial recruitment events per year. We reach about sixty thousand unique viewers with digital print and media. Kathy Johnson is our existing industry staff member. She's been there for
Over twenty years.
Yeah, over twenty years. She's got a great relationship with the plant managers. She is certainly a troubleshooter for those guys. They heavily rely on her to help solve the problems of the day. Did you want to talk about
Our recent project announcements over the past year?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So E-clerks expansion, we had Councilman Dawkins there help with ribbon cutting. That created a hundred and fifty new jobs. Booze Allen Hamilton, creating two hundred and eight jobs and more than fifty, oh, sorry, five million in investment. Campbell Soup with the distribution center, creating a hundred and ninety-five jobs and a forty million dollar investment. And that's six hundred and twenty-seven thousand square feet of building space.
And another piece that we're extremely proud of is our Innovation Center and our collaborative efforts that we're expanding upon. We have a, the core Innovation Center is the hub for the development and the deployment of new ideas and technology. That's our new office space here in downtown. We have been on, well, we are the first of its kind in North Carolina with a healthcare next generation partnership, with over twenty local providers, improving the coordination of care. We have recently began work with the city to inventory sites at the airport and adjacent sites to develop aviation-specific marketing. We are increasing our transportation strategies with the city to look into the possible re-establishment of passenger rail. We're going to be exploring some of those studies and things that have been conducted over the years, as well as our events that we have been organizing, a number of events with the city to increase the understanding of our local employers with what it is that our organization does and provides to the community. Over a thousand jobs in the last year that FCEDC has created.
Excellent. What we'd also like to do tonight, other than get your approval of this report, we have three proposed amendments that Mr. Hewitt, so never, we'd like to increase the number of appointments made by the city and county from three to four, so that goes back to what we were discussing. It's more going to match up your contributions and basically align your voting to your contribution. Thank you. Election of officers to occur in July instead of December each year, that would allow the current board members to understand, you know, have a little bit more understanding of what's going on on the existing board before we are recommending a new voting member. Number three, amend the bylaws to reflect our new office address. We were previously located over at FTCC. Now we're at two oh one Hay Street, Suite four oh one A, in the PWC, R.J. Reynolds Building. And then number four, how did you want to do that, Doug?
Pretty much, Council, if you accept the report and agree to amend the bylaws tonight, what this would mean would be, the county would also have to approve it to be effective, and so this would be the first step. If, however, the council would like to consider this more, you have additional questions, we would ask you just to accept the report, and we can put the proposed amendments to the bylaws on your consent agenda at an upcoming meeting. But as these seem to be fairly straightforward, additional, one additional member that we would probably recommend to council, you run through your appointments process, and then just the other ones are just a matter of business. We thought we would be able to take care of both of those tonight. I would, while I have the microphone as well, to say that for the E-clerks, in addition to Councilman Dawkins, we also had, Councilmember Protemone was also a speaker there as well at that as well. He was representing the council and the mayor, who was unable to be that day for that announcement. But the council's support for those ribbon cuttings and events, I think, does mean a lot to the business community and definitely to EDC as well.
Thank you for that. And importantly as well, we're certainly not asking for any more money. We are within our budget, and we're looking good. You all have any questions?
Yes, sir, you do have a few, and before I go to Councilmember Chris and Dawkins, I'd like to say you guys are doing a great job. There's a lot of progress being made on that board. You know, Robert, I don't know where he is tonight to get, you know, he didn't show up, so he didn't know what mood we were in tonight.
I believe he's giving his kids a bath.
Did he?
He's smarter than I am.
Oh, yeah. Well, let him know that, you know, at least from my perspective, you all are doing a great job, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Chris?
Yeah, a couple of things. I had initially pushed my button because I wanted to clarify what recent means with regards to a thousand jobs, but the young lady did clarify. They're talking about within the last year. That's quite an accomplishment, and you'd be commended for that. But now I'm going to the question of elections, because I'm looking at this sheet that shows three people whose term is over on thirty November. The Vice Chair, and Mr. Rossdatter, and Mr. Suggs.
Right.
What do we do about between now and July? I don't, Mr. Mayor, first, let me say this. I don't see any reason to hold up and discuss this further. We need to give them what they need, let them move on, and get us another thousand jobs, okay? But what are you going to do about the three who it appears their terms are over on thirty November twenty eighteen?
One of those was from the private sector.
Yes, Mr. Rossdatter.
That's correct. So that is going to be filled by the private sector.
I can answer.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Mr. Suggs, City of Fayetteville.
Yes, he's requesting reappointment, and I know that Vice Chair Pilgrim is not going to be requesting appointment. And regarding your concern with from now until July, the bylaws will, one of the amendments is that for the first term, it will start in December, and then subsequently every year after that way, they'll still be staggered.
So the final question I have is, you indicated that Mr. Suggs is requesting reappointment. Who does that appointment, Mr. Mayor? Because I haven't seen that coming to the appointments committee. Because I haven't seen that coming to the appointments committee.
It, it, it will. From our understanding, it will go back to you all for the appointments committee.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, he'll request that to you all.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Better than good, outstanding. And I don't say that often.
I'll take it. Thank you.
Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I think we have one more comment. Miss, Councilman Jensen? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on the appointments for the viewing audience out there, for the city, I understand that we get two appointments? Or we get three appointments?
You'll have three, but you also have representation from the mayor.
Correct. No, as it is right now, we have two appointments and the representation of the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
And the county gets...
The same.
The same. Okay, so you're...
Their chairman is also, Chairman Lanikascha is also represented there.
Correct. So what you're asking for is for each, the city and the county, to get one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I have to ask the question, does the county give the same amount of money as the city?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so everything will line up correctly with four tenths vote, four tenths contribution.
Just wanted to make that public. Okay, thank you.
How did I know that was coming up? Let's see, Councilman Dawkins?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the report and approve the amendments.
Second, sir.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Dawkins, a second by Councilmember here. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I look to you for votes to approve. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. All right, Ms. Pennett, go get to give the baths.
Another thousand jobs coming our way soon.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Councilmember, I'm sorry. Items eight point zero one, Fayetteville Police Department Chief.
Mayor, Councilmembers. Good evening. First of all...
Good evening.
There we go. That's better. First of all, thank you for allowing me, once again, to give me the, give you this third-quarter report of the police department. Just a little snapshot of, a little bit of the work that we've been doing on the police department. So to start this off, I felt that there had to be an understanding to see what are the things that traditional departments measure? How do we measure things? So the first thing I needed to share was the aspect of what, how, how you gauge those numbers? When you say something is, where crime is up or crime is down, there are numbers that are evaluated across the nation and is called under the Uniform Crime Reporting. This was established in nineteen twenty-nine by the FBI, so we can compare cities across the nation, apples to apples. When you have a definition of a homicide, a rape, or robbery, you know what it's called. It has nothing to do with the state, state's law, or state's law regarding what is titled for homicide or what's titled for burglary. So there's certain elements that are listed in the definitions for Uniform Crime Reporting. Some of those, the data is collected monthly, and in some cities or some states, they submit it either directly to the FBI, or they submit it through the state organization like our SBI. So there's also a hierarchy rule in the UCR crime reporting, meaning there's seven. For example, homicide, rape, aggravated assault, robbery. The reason why UCR does that is they figure there are certain crimes that are more egregious than others. Crimes against persons are more egregious than crimes against property. So when you're reporting, they, you can actually count those incidents one. If you have a homicide, and in that homicide, you might have had a burglary, some theft occur, it's actually going to be counted as one crime in that, in that category. Why that's, I needed to share that with you is the FBI is going to change how crime is being counted. They're going on, under the National Incident Base Reporting System, better known as NIBR. So NIBR is a system that's already been established, and it is being used to be able to include a lot more detail about the incidents that are occurring. The information regarding the offense, the type of offense, the victims, pretty much drills down everything that occurred in that single incident. And there is no hierarchy rule with NIBR. So we actually transitioned November the first. That entailed a lot of work. That entailed a lot of communication, training of all the officers, all our staff and records, making sure they understood how to, understood how to submit the police report so it correlates with NIBR's counting system. The SBI is actually requiring every agency in North Carolina who voluntarily submits their data to transition January one, twenty nineteen. And the FBI is going to require nationwide everybody to move off of UCR and transition by twenty twenty-one. What is comparison? What's the difference in UCR and NIBR? So UCR, bottom line is, NIBR is going to drill down a lot more because it's going to enable police departments to really look at MO, what's, what else is involved, victimology, so that we can really start deploying our manpower more than just saying a homicide occurred here. It's going to be more resourceful. But there's also going to be another aspect of it. There can be expected view from the citizen that there's more than one crime, the crime is going up. Why is that? Because there is not, not only is there not a hierarchy in NIBR, but I'll give you an example, as simple as I can imagine. You have two offenders enter a bar at gunpoint. One of the robbers finds a female, rapes her in the bathroom without the knowledge of the other one. They both return. There's a robbery and there's a rape. With NIBR, there's going to be two reports, one incident. But in UCR, that would have been one incident. Hierarchy, meaning that the rape is higher than the robbery, if that makes sense. There's multitudes of scenarios that could, that will capture this. This is as basic as I can explain so you understand what that means in numbers-wise. So with that said, another way that we as police kind of gauge how we monitor our crimes, we put them in categories of crimes against person and crimes against property. So the first thing I'm going to talk to you about is the crimes against persons category. I had to, I started from January to September because we basically had to have some type of comparison. And it takes a little bit, about a month, to make sure the numbers are right when we submit them so that we have accurate numbers. And I needed to be able to share with you some good numbers. So as of September, homicide compared to this year was down seventeen percent. Of that, of those nineteen that occurred today, seven of them were domestic violence-related. And the other ones are related to gang-related robbery, drugs. The majority of those were not stranger-to-stranger incidents. Our rapes, as you see, is down eight percent. Our aggravated assault, that's a, that's a key number that I'm going to drill down a little bit more in the next pa-, on the next page. But four hundred of that nine-nine-six is felony. So because that number was so outstanding and it's progressed over the years, I wanted to drill down and to see what is driving this numbers? What are we doing differently? What can we, what has changed within that? And we identified that thirty-five percent of the ones that occurred in twenty eighteen were domestic violence-related. Compared to twenty seventeen, where only ten percent were aggravated assault-related. And because I can't tell you why that increase has occurred, which is the reason why I have three detectives now assigned to a domestic violence unit, to be able to look, drill down a little bit more, to be proactive, there's no way we can be in a home in a domestic violence situation to prevent it. But what can we do, whether it's education, whether it's proactively working with a different network, working with Cumberland County, the court system? How can we proactively really gauge and look at the aggravated assaults that are happening in the city? So that's one thing. I talked about crimes against property is our next section. So we have down, we're down comparatively in burglaries by ten percent compared to last year of this time. Larcenies, down seventeen percent. Motor vehicle thefts, as you see, twenty-one percent. So the overall property crimes are down sixteen percent. I wanted to notate, so when you count UCR, they count Part One crimes, which are all the, the total of crimes against person and crimes against property. So overall, as of that date, year-to-date, was, we're down twelve point two percent, everything included. I wanted to also notate, one of the, one of the key crimes that really drives numbers up in, throughout cities are larcenies. Larcenies can have, be thefts from vehicles or thefts, things that you leave out. And so, for example, that larceny number of four, four thousand and seventy, seventy-eight, out of those numbers, there were eight hundred and twelve larcenies from vehicle during that time period, which equates to, what I want to share about that is, five hundred and ninety-eight of just the larcenies from vehicle, seventy-four percent were vehicles left unsecure. You think that's a high number. The higher number is previous years, most, about eighty-five to ninety percent of those were vehicles left unsecure. Why I'm saying that is, one of our crime strategies is education. You hear about our nine PM routine where we tell people, please lock your doors. We started this nine PM routine just this year. That's a high number to say it's decreased. We're hoping it's related to proactively educating the community to lock your doors because we've shared that people are going to take not the least amount of energy. They're not going to break windows. They're going to open a door to steal your items. So we're hoping from ninety-five to eighty-five, eighty-five to ninety percent, that decrease to seventy-four percent, that it can keep getting lower and lower, vehicles that are left unsecure. Last year, we talked about our traffic fatalities that happen in the city. Those are, those are key issues that are very, very important to us. And so we, we try to monitor at, at that time, what is driving fatalities? We know that speeding's a major factor. We also know that those fatalities at, as of that time were related to motorcycle accidents. We are always campaigning regarding getting with Fort Bragg because a lot of things relate to, a couple of those fatalities were soldiers. So just sharing information on speeding, that this also directs where we deploy our manpower for speeders and where we direct, aside from getting requests from the community of monitoring speeders. So we, I have, as you know, specialized units. We have a narcotics unit, and this is just a comparative of what they had done year-to-date as of September. There's no way to, and this is just the narcotics unit alone. This is not departmental-wise. So when you look at these numbers, what is the narcotics unit doing by themselves compared to twenty seventeen? There's no way for us to say we're going to focus on trying to get this particular drug off the street. This is a result of them doing investigation proactively. Every arrest that happened there each year is a felony arrest in the narcotics unit. We work in concert with task force members. We have eleven task force members on a narcotics unit. What that means is other federal agencies or other agencies like the FBI, ATF, DEA, US Marshals, and the US Treasury offers, Office, to help us use other resources, other task force, to pretty much look at the region and see what's coming to Fayetteville. An example is the Organized Crime Drug Task Force we're a member of. This is a national task force. We have members on the task force right now. Fayetteville Police Department, in one of our cases, is recommended nationally for an award by OSDEF. That's a federal. So it's, it's pretty hard to be recommended nationally for a case of the year. So I'm very proud of them in that aspect. I've shared previously, starting February the fifth, when I did a reorganization, I started the gang unit. And the gang unit was pretty much to see what is in our community, gain intelligence, a lot of different training, and see what they can do to, how bad is gang affecting our, our community and the nexus of crime? Since that time, they have validated one hundred and seventy-eight gang members. What does validation means? That means they're just not calling, saying, yes, that's a person of a gang member. They're looking for if someone is doing self-admission, the tattoos, the colors they wear. It takes a lot of different steps to identify, yes, this person is a gang member. And then we're keeping that intelligence so we can be proactive in, in our investigations and tying them to whatever crimes that they're doing or being proactive to, to look at a different area. So the gang unit also conducts internal and external educational awareness of what to, how to identify gang members in your home, what they look like. It's not like in the past of twenty or thirty years ago, they're not going to be prevalent with just straight colors. They're not going to have standard names. They have evolved greatly. This unit alone has made all the drug seizures and as well as they by themselves have taken as of that date, eighty-nine weapons off the street by themselves and made seventy-nine arrests. All those are combined misdemeanor and felony arrests, so that's the gang unit. So we talk about weapons on the street because one of the things for aggravated assault, we have seen an increase in gun activity. We have seen minors accessing handguns. We have seen when school is out, there's gun activity. And when school is not in session, there's an increase in gun activity. So this is kind of very important for us. Recovery means when someone has reported their gun stolen, how many have we, how many weapons have we recovered that were reported stolen? Seize means that if we're investigating a crime or if we're involved in an arrest, we've seized a weapon off of someone who didn't have the right to have one. Grand total this year, only, there were two hundred and fifty-nine weapons reported stolen by citizens in Fayetteville, compared to twenty seventeen, three hundred and seventy weapons were reported stolen. Hopefully, hopefully, that is people securing the weapons a lot better. So I also have a Community Affairs Unit because community engagement is very crucial, as we've mentioned before, and the community playing a, a big role in keeping their, their community safe. But the Community Affairs Unit is really folk, really is decentralized. They report to me under the, the Chief of Police. Those are the Crime Prevention Officers, Sergeant and Officer and Lieutenant. They pretty much make sure they assist Community Watch Groups get on their feet. They get the information to Business Watch Groups as well. You see virtual Community Watch Groups. What is that? Those are communities that decided that we don't want to meet, but they still communicate via email, via Facebook page, and we still have our Crime Prevention Officer still assigned to them. These are, they make next-door notifications. This is just the events the Community Affairs Unit attends. This is not the events that the police department attends as a whole. They also have provided sixty-five safety and security briefings in Justice Unit alone. So yes, what is, what is my crime-fighting strategy? You know, it's not, it's not a gauge just to say, if crime is down, we're doing awesome. Crime can be down, and the perception is, you know, crime is off the chain. But crime can be up, and if the community feels that they're safe, that's, it's a combined effort. So what do we do? The first thing that I did was I reorganized a department to figure out how can we solve crimes faster, better, communicate from detectives to patrol officers. Also decentralize the property crime unit. So all property crime detectives are now into three different districts, which means they have a quick communication that's in area relation so that officers can hit this information with the detectives and, and solve crimes, crime a lot better regarding property crime. I said I have a gang unit, but I also have gang liaison officers within the districts. So they're like, they're patrol officers, but they also obtain information from the gang unit or feed information from the district areas to share to the, the gang unit. And I have the Community Empowerment Response Team that answers, is four officers and a sergeant that answers directly to that captain of that district. So if they need any type of increased hotspot policing, whether it be a drug issue, whether it be, even if it's an issue regarding, there's no attention being given to this area. If we make an arrest, whether it be a narcotics arrest or a gang arrest, or we do proactive ish, and make a lot of, let's see, targeting one area. What they are responsible for is going back the next day or even the day after that to talk to the community. Because what we want is the community to, to know Because what we want is the community to, to know that we're here for them and we're here to support them. They also engage in, um, the school systems that are in those districts to say, to, to build those bridges of community relations. Um, I talked about the task force and how, um, I've expanded that. We have someone now assigned to, um, the U S Treasury Office, um, and we, I also mentioned earlier, the domestic violence unit. Now, how else do I have handle crime fa- fighting strategies? Implemented Citizen Police Academy. We have one graduation just occurred today with forty-two, uh, residents graduating today. That was the second one this year. Um, very proud of that. We also cr- I've created a faith-based forum quarterly where the leaders, uh, of the faith-based community not only come to be able to share their feelings from their, their, uh, lead, the people they're leading. But we also take advantage of training opportunities. We're having one, our final one for the quarter this Friday. And because of the season, we're talking crime prevention, how to not be a victim, whether it be as you're shopping or, uh, so it's going to be focused on crime prevention this Friday. I modified the community to watch to ensure that not only is the crime prevention officer there, there is a sworn representative from that district there to be able, be, to be able to answer specific questions that are police, uh, response related. So, um, another thing, we're always looking for funding to expand, um, our resources. As you know, we have the police, uh, foundation. Not only do they assist us with, um, maybe buying things like, uh, raising money for a microscope or tourniquets for officers. But their advocacy for the police department is a huge crime fighting strategy of awareness. So, and then we also, um, we expanded our E K G, um, Educating Kids on Guns program. We're in schools, um, teaching, uh, middle school age kids on how to prevent, um, um, gun violence. We have secured a grant for a portable fingerprint system. We also have a training simulator for, um, um, what, as you would call it, shoot, don't shoot scenarios. So you get in the simulator, there's no weapon and you make decision-making, um, um, quick decision-making, um, scenarios. And we, we were secure funding because of all the training that we needed for Nibers. Nibers was so extensive, we got support and training for the Nibers training. And our social media platform because our ability to educate the community as much as possible is a crime fighting strategy. We sent out our nine P M. Routine on that. We have five platforms that we, um, we are on. They are, um, oh, just lost my, you know, that besides, um, Facebook, Twitter, um, our YouTube account. Snapchat, thank you. And there's, Instagram, thank you very much. Um, besides our app, besides our police department app, we have that. So, uh, this also, we connected, you know, we have Crime Stoppers that helps us get the information out to solve crime. We've solved so many different things, just pushing it out, making sure the community helps us. Um, and this, so let me give an example of that. During, during Hurricane Florence alone, from September fourteenth to se- to seventeenth, we were pushing out information, communicating for the safety. We gained, um, thirty-seven hundred new fans, over thirty-seven hundred new fans just for pushing out information. People were tuning in, seeing if they weren't there, uh, looking for their, their, uh, family members who lived here. The photo in the, the lower right corner was used nationally, um, because our, um, our P I O was taking photos, monitoring the, the, the stage of the, uh, the rise of the river. So, um, this is a big, big tool that we use as crime finding strategy. So, um, with that, I am here to answer questions now.
Okay, Chief, I do have a couple for you. Uh, Councilman here.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, before I get started, I wanted to do this early. Just wanted to thank the chief. I had a little emergency earlier tonight and after hearing what I'm hearing tonight and what you all do and helping to keep people calm. Because I've never really had to have a one-on-one with police, but I sent them out for a lot of my constituent base. So thank you for what you did, did to help my family tonight and to help me to, to stay calm. You did a good job. Now, um, burglaries down.
Yes, sir.
Law- larceny down, car theft down. You sort of pinpointed on it and I hear a lot of what we, what our crime prevention bring to our, uh, community to watch meetings. What else can you relate? When we see figures, when they start to go down, how can relate that to what good things our police departments are doing?
So what the police department really focuses on is, uh, we do a combination of intelligence-led policing, which means we, we gather the data. We also focus on, um, understanding that the majority of the crime is occurring out there is occu- occurring by repeat offenders. So we also focus on repeat offenders or expected offenders that's occurred in the area and we monitor, monitor that. And then we look at the data to see what's going on and solvability. One thing, um, if I'm able to share a little bit about how, for example, let's talk about, because to me crimes against persons is a little bit more egregious. The detectives work, for example, our homicide, our clearance rate. Our clearance rate when, when our homicide unit gets on task in twenty eighteen year-to-date, eh, or from that time period, not, over a ninety-five percent clearance rate. So not only are they, um, investigating, but they're solving it. Compared to twenty seventeen, um, it's, it was still high at ninety, over ninety-six percent. The national average is sixty-one percent for homicide clearance rate. The same sense, we talk about aggravated assault, clearance rate is, um, for, for our police department is sixty-two percent. National average is fifty-three percent. We, we are, we're able to, I do have the, uh, let me see, I have the clearance rate for, um, property crimes. Other than our numbers for property crimes, like you say, larceny, um, and burglary. What we've seen is the more a community is involved, being aware of how to make a phone call when they see suspicious activity. How they, how, how, and, and suspicious activity is, I share this with them all the time. You know your community. When you look out, if some, something's odd, never hesitate to call nine-one-one. You are our eyes and ears. We can't do it without you. So the more the community knows that when they get the little bit of hair to the back of their neck stands up or something's just not right, when they call us, don't ever worry about pushing nine-one calls. We will prioritize the call and come out. At least it will document what they seen. That helps us solve if we look for our cost of service, did anyone call in that area? Another example is, um, we had last week, a, a lady is one of our Crime Stoppers of the Week, get assaulted, um, going to her mailbox. Stranger, that's a stranger. In her, and, and, in her yard by a stranger. We need the community to help us. Somebody had seen that. So when we keep push that out and, and, uh, and reach for the community to get engaged, get involved, um, that helps, that makes our job safer. That makes our job easier. I mean, that makes the community safer when everybody's eyes are on, on the situation.
W- one more thing there. The, the, the mayor mentioned tonight, uh, he gave a little overview on our community watch. And I really, 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 really believe in community watch. I really try to make as many as possible. Can you reiterate those that are listening? Because they need to be larger. I mean, you know, you know, we need more members. Just kind of give us an overview, just how important community to watch works and how it plays a role in some of our numbers being low.
Absolutely, sir. So I talked about us having a hundred and forty-two, um, community watch groups. The, that's just a group. So how large that group is and how efficient that groups, group is, gives us the ability to be better. And, um, we share this at the graduation. Someone said, what can I, what can I do to help you all? And I say, you know what you can do? You can become involved in your community watch group or you can become aware of what the city, what's going on in the city. When you share, the, the community dictates how safe their commu- their, their environment is. When they're aware of their streets, their neighbors and share information, they're able to, um, feed that information to us, whether it be the district captain, the lieutenants that are working in that area or crime prevention or amongst themselves. And never be afraid to say, I don't want to get someone in trouble if I give too much information. We will filter. We're not going to go snatch someone up because of, of a hunch. We're going to investigate it or even attach it to a crime that may have occurred in that instant, it, in that area or filter if it's something or not. So the community watch groups are very, very crucial to us being able to do our job. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Art.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to make a motion to approve the reports. I'll wait till the end.
Yeah, I've got some several comments. Um, Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Chief. I've got some specific, um, questions for you. Historically, Fayetteville has reported all of its crimes and that's hurt us economically versus other municipalities across state. That's probably not something you're aware of, but Greensburg, Durham, Raleigh, Charlotte, all underreported their crimes and they use that against us, uh, for economic development. So I'm assuming that this moving from a U C R to a Nibers hopefully will correct some of that? Or do you think they can still under-report versus what we do?
All, all, I don't know what other communities, other cities do. I would hope that they are following, um, the guidelines, um, um, because that's basically illegal. And so, but the Nibers is across the board. We, we are going to send a, a message to the community explaining Nibers in a format to try to understand it, um, acro- i- i- in the community when we go to our community watch groups. So they understand what, what we're looking at. But like you said, underreporting may be an issue, just like, um, the opioid issue. That issue is nationwide. There are some communities that are ignoring the issue. When you're ignoring the issue, you're never getting tools to address the issue. We are being recognized throughout the nation to be able to talk about how the city of Fayetteville handles it. Not the arrests, not the, um, just what the police department do, but how we gain partnerships through the community to resolve the problem. Because you, we can't arrest our way out of it. We can't, um, and it's affecting everyone. So when we are, um, counting the, the opioid issues or when we counting our crime, or for example, when I'm looking at, I've got these domestic violence issues. I got to figure out proactively, what else, what other resources can we do to address it? It may mean that people, or we may mean that people are reporting now, or I'm calling the police to say, I've been abused. That may be the default of more people are reporting. I don't know, but I have to, um, document it and, and say, you know, we have salt, we have the clearance rates, we have that. But it may be, uh, working against us in that aspect, but we don't want to ever ignore the actual incidents that occur. We want to be as transparent as possible.
When, uh, Chief, when you use the two seventeen versus two thousand eighteen, was that nine months out of two thousand seventeen versus the exact same nine months out of, out of two thousand eight?
Yes, sir. It was comparing apples to apples, yes.
Um, uh, third, Chief, um, could you tell us how many officers were down, um, approximately? And, and, um, and then secondly to that, and I've got two more questions, Mr. Mayor, after that. But are you studying how we can, um, reduce, um, um, the folks who are leaving in effect, increase our retention rates? Versus, um, the city of Fayetteville has always been a training ground for Atlanta, Charlotte, Richmond, Washington. And I'd like for us to keep these great, um, female and male officers out there working for us.
You're correct. We have amazing officers and we also predict, um, or we plan for approximately three officers to leave for whatever reason, whether it be, um, a new job. But we are not, we are, we will have an over-hire class starting in January of twenty-five mem- people in the class. We, we are, and that is us hiring them right now. We've already approved for them to be hired, but we're in over-hire mode. So we're not in a deficit of officers and I hate to repeat that because we're an anom- anomaly. But when I came into the agency, we were at that, and that was a rarity for law enforcement. We weren't not, we were at allocation or very close planning for those three dat- three to leave, whether it be retirement, whether it be, um, moving because of family. But, um, we are always proactively looking for hire, having an academy. We just graduated last week sixteen, um, new officers. So, and we are prepared in January to start our next January class of twenty-five with nine of those being over-hire personnel.
So what you're telling me in effect is our retention is improving?
Our, we've got good retention, sir.
No, that, that's, that's good. We, we've not ever been.
Knocking on wood. I, I don't want to guess.
That's right.
And it's, and it's, and it's been, I walked in the door and it was like that. It was, I was very shocked that it had been like that. So I'm very proud of it too. So, um, yes, sir.
All right. Um, thank you, Chief. Cameras, um, it's going to be so important once we get this baseball stadium completed that we have total coverage for our city. Uh, with cameras and is that a priority for you at this time?
Absolutely. Not only a priority, you know, our last storm, we knocked out antennas off of a, a tower. So we're working on that. Definitely a priority. We have, um, looking at actually fiber for our phase two to make sure it's a little more secure and not get knocked out by the storm. And I also am working, um, I have got to share with the city manager some other steps of looking at cameras throughout the city.
All right. That's going to be so crucial and plus we need to push that out into the neighborhoods. Because my neighborhood's had increase in activity, criminal activity. And I appreciate you having your detectives much more involved. Lastly, gang activity, you touched on it. Um, do you, do you see gang activity increasing was part A and then part B of my question is, does our, uh, team work closely with the county? Because these gangs are spread throughout our, our county, not just in our city.
Increasing meaning we just started February the fifth. So every number we're counting is a start of, it has to increase, just like we said, the reporting. We've identified this issue, we're, we're connecting a nexus to everything. And remember, I emphasize our partnerships is very, very crucial for us as an agency to exist. We work very closely with the county and every other jur- jurisdiction around us to make sure we share information and, um, and to solve all type of crimes in the region. So, yes, sir.
Councilman Dawkins, you sound like you're law enforcement, didn't you?
You want to be.
All right. Uh, I will go to, uh, Councilman Cullerton and Wadell. I do have a question for you, uh, Chief. You, you reported a stat about the, um, the aggravated assault number being up.
Yes.
Um, and, and I'm, I'm simply asking because I think that as you do that, and you said thirty-five percent is related to domestic violence. Okay. Which is something that's hard to police. So something else is going on if you dig below the surface. So whether, you know, we're a military town, whether it's extended deployments, putting extra pressure on families or, or P T S D or whatever it is. Proactively, uh, wh- whatever plan you, you plan to, to approach this with, are you looking holistically, uh, at working with the military? For instance, uh, you know, I know that, that, uh, seventy percent of those guys live in the city. And so, uh, whatever proactive plan, it, it'll be all encompassing, I guess, to, to cover some of those family issues or some other things. Uh, can you touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, so the reason why I'm deploying, because we've ar- we've been working constantly with Fort Bragg, um, with identifying when people deploy and or come back. What is the training going on for that? Because that may heighten some issues. But that's the reason why I'm, I'm focusing three detectives to look at, not reactionary. What are the other elements related to what's going on in different cases? The misdemeanor, do we have repeat cases that are coming up? Because every time one comes up, we have to deal with it. We also are going to, um, enable them to join with the county and the court system to see what other holistic ways we can address this. So I'm giving them the ability to say, find out what's going on, how can we address it? So, yes, sir.
All right. And the last thing, um, you, you, you said traffic, uh, I saw you gave a report on traffic fatalities. I think we were, we, uh, we're down or equivalent, let's see.
Yeah, we, but we've had fatalities since that time period, unfortunately, sir.
Yeah, so we, we, we were up a little bit from seventeen.
We might be up a little bit at this point.
I had sent a request about Clifdel Road specifically. Um, I don't recall getting anything back on that. Do you have any?
We, we have four fatalities that, that have occurred on, uh, Clifdel Road this year. So, um, in twenty eighteen. So we have, we have, um, the data, we have extensively increased, um, speed enforcement on Clifdel Road. And for us, any unsafe driving, um, off, so we have, we have been constantly on, on Clifdel Road as a result of every single, um, fatality. We haven't really moved from Clifdel Road, but unfortunately that's not, um, slowing them down.
Okay. All right. Uh, Councilman Cullerton.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll try to keep mine brief. Uh, first, I just want to thank you and, and, uh, what your force is doing, uh, in lowering these numbers. Uh, one murder, one rape is always too much, but we're, seem to be on the right track. So thank you and please let this council know if there's anything else you need, uh, to further that. Um, I just, uh, will echo some of what's already been said about the community watches. There's a hundred and forty-two, I think a hundred and twenty are in District Two. But, um, that's a joy. Which is fantastic, um, because, uh, it's very important, as you mentioned, that, uh, these citizens become engaged. And what I find, uh, most effective is not just being in a standard community watch, but really having social engagement in that community. Makes a big difference. When you start to get out, know your neighbor and care for that neighbor, um, that makes a big difference in the community. And, uh, also I want to touch again on the nine-one-one. A lot of folks still, um, are hesitant to call nine-one-one. They don't feel it's important enough. They feel like they're, um, going to clog the system. Um, so I'd just like to reiterate as we do at all the community watches that use nine-one-one to call.
I call nine-one-one.
Exactly, as do I. And, uh, tho- those folks in the neighborhoods, as you mentioned, they are the best ones to know when something is out of place, something doesn't seem right, when a person doesn't seem to be, um, up to any good in their neighborhood. If they see something at their neighbor's house or somebody is not there, they need to, they need to reach out and call nine-one-one. And more importantly, um, there's elderly citizens and others who are just fearful to call nine-one-one for retaliation. And so, uh, after I'm through or, or now, I suppose, if you can go through the process of anonymously and, and the different ways someone could call nine-one-one in that situation.
So the, the basic of being able to use the phone, call nine-one-one, one marks the time when the incident happened. Identifies the person or the person can say, I want to remain, remain anonymous. It is also recorded. That is almost a tracking mechan- mechanism for the police department and a resource to, to identify one, did they say they want to remain anonymous? Or how much information they're getting at that moment versus waiting, uh, for a time period to pass and then you kind of forget some things. It, it helps us extremely with being able to do investigations. Did we get, we call it a cat call at that time period? We will prioritize it. If it is, um, ten, ten thousand things happen one time and you're just calling because I, I, I lost my cat, we'll say, hold on, sir, ma'am, stand by, we got some other priorities. And so know that, never be afraid to call nine-one-one. No one will ever yell at you and if they do, please definitely call me. But it's recorded, so no one's going to yell, no one's going to yell for calling nine-one-one. They would definitely be helpful in, in, in addressing any concerns or issues. But we really rather you call us so we can just go check out the neighborhood or whatever the issue may be.
And I think that's an important point that there has to be a priority at times in the triage, so to speak. So, uh, I've heard a lot of folks echo back to me that, well, I call it, doesn't make a difference if they, they don't show up. You will, if the time allots it for something else, uh, to be taken care of, that might be a priority. So I want, uh, citizens to know that and also that there. So I want, uh, citizens to know that, and also that there's a text nine-one-one too.
There is.
Did you touch on that? I didn't hear that.
No, I did not, but you can text nine-one-one and without going into the details, because I don't want to mess everyone's instructions, we, we will be able to provide it. You can go to our website and we'll, we, we'll also give lessons at community watch groups like we have before, how to do text nine-one-one. And it's basically just sending a text nine-one-one. It's going to also evolve where you're going to eventually be able to send videos and things like that through nine-one-one, so.
Thank you for that, uh, clarification and, um, overview of that. Now, um, with hotspots in the community, I know there always are, and of course, I have a few of those. Um, do you do anything to focus on those, uh, to, to kind of break those hotspots apart? Uh, or do you handle like any other crime in the city?
So when I say hotspots, I, I'll say hotspots can mean a couple of different things. It can mean where the, um, where we've got documented data that an incident occurred. That can be a hotspot based off of the, um, someone reporting a crime. There's a theft, there's an increase in burglaries, um, throughout the week. If a captain sees, we've had three or four burglaries in one night, that becomes a hotspot for that captain at that time. He doesn't have the ability, he does, but he does not wait till Wednesday or the next week to say, well, let me see what's going on. He has the ability to say, hey, this is, this is an issue. Let me deploy my resource to that area right now. Then somebody also may believe a hotspot can say, I've got complaints in this community from numerous people that this is happening. Let's focus our energy on this area because they're saying people out there selling drugs. They're saying people out there, um, um, breaking in cars and we never see it. So the information is dri- driven by the captain from the information they receive regarding if it's a phone call or if it's a data that they're evaluating. So they can, hotspot can say, hey, go in this area to focus on this, this topic or maneuver, they're just not specialized in narcotics, or they're just not specialized in gains. They're able to, uh, use their discretion to investigate what are, what the issues are that the community is calling about.
Yeah, I know there's some areas that are certainly, um, chronic issues, uh, that we know about. So I'm, I'm, uh, looking forward to working with you and, um, and, and trying to eradicate some of that. Um, last thing is, I noticed, uh, a stat on there that was a little interesting to me. We had a, uh, a decrease in just about everything except marijuana. We're up fifteen hundred and eighty-two percent on that. Uh, that's a significant increase, obviously. In your opinion, do you think that's due to the nation's overall view with a lot of the legalizing and other states are going on, or do you feel there's something else going on there? Um,
No, sir. That's just good investigative work. [laughing] We want, we want good numbers. We want to increase all the time. We can't control it. And, um, you know, that might have been a good, um, um, follow-up and all of a sudden-
Why in that one category, though? I saw heroin, all the other drugs.
We had, we had like two-
Was it one or two big busts?
It was two big busts that we had this year, yes.
Thank you.
For marijuana, whereas last year we had a major bust for, uh, fentanyl, which is huge.
Okay, very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Hi, Chief Hawkins.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you for all the work that you and everyone on the force does. We really appreciate you. I've got two questions, only two. My first question is, um, there was an article in the paper about a gentleman whose family found his body using drone technology. So it raised a question from a member of my district asking, do we have similar technology? And I'm aware that we do, but if you'll just share a little about the technology behind policing in the city of Fayetteville. That's the first question. And I'll go ahead and give you the second question, and you can just knock them both out. How is your staff trained to handle interactions with individuals when it comes to mental health? Or persons who are differently abled, for example, um, maybe hearing impaired or have autistic, um, an autistic background? How is your, your force trained to handle that?
So I'm going to start with that question first, because that, so the police academy from the jump starts them when they become a new, um, police officer. We have crisis intervention training, we have awareness of identifying. We are, we are constantly trained, the police department, and always constantly evolving for anything new that may be, that we need to be aware of. Um, policing is not just patrolling in a car. It is the responsibility of us to make sure we're, uh, educated with the resources available to be able to identify things, um, whether it be, um, um, excited delirium. When, and that was a few years ago, an issue that came, came out, we were required to get trained up on those issues. We are constantly training on multiple things all the time. That's why training is very, very impactful for a police department to know what else is new, because we can't just say we're ignorant and it's somebody else's problem. It is not. It is wholelessly everyone's, um, concern and how to resolve this. So not just the cadets, but across the board, we are always proactively training on, um, whether it be crisis intervention, like I said before, or the mental health issues, what to look for. Uh, we're not doctors, but we've got a lot of different trainings to say, if something is not expected, what do we resort to? How do we de-escalate a situation that we, and still stay, stay safe? So that's very, very crucial. Um, so the bottom line answer to that is we are constantly always looking for training for every aspect of, um, dealing with the community, as well as knowing our resource to go if, um, how to get a different language, whether it be sign language, whether, um, how do we build our bridges with the hearing deaf impaired? You know, we, we, we're planning, we had our first, uh, meeting with, um, they came from Raleigh, with that group and identifying who and all the members here in Fayetteville of that community, because they're part of our community. They're coming, they want to plan again to come in January to speak with us, to get some training from the police department on different topics. So we're always proactively reaching out to different groups, um, whatever the language barrier is, to be able to know that we have a resource to call someone and connect with that community member. Now, technology. Um, we are always, yes, ma'am, we have drones. Um, we have drones with specific instructions on how we use them, because they have been a big resource for us, whether it been, um, us, uh, helping, um, earlier this year to find, um, out by Jacksonville, a young girl or a young boy lost, or more recently, helping out Lumberton for the car, um, looking for the young, has the umbrella of the thirteen-year-old. We're always proactively using the drone, um, to, um, help us. But we also always looking for other technology to help officers or the, the police department, um, be on the forefront of resources, be on the forefront of investigation, making sure detectives have, um, I, um, notebooks to while they're on scene, they can share information and, and collect their reports right there on scene. That's crucial. They have cameras. All, every aspect of technology is crucial for investigations, um, for the police department. So we're always, um, looking for technology to ma- not just to buy it, but to say, how is this going to make our job more efficient and effective?
Thank you. Councilman Wright.
Yes, Chief, I just want to, uh, begin by than- thanking you for a job well done. Um, the things that you've put in place since you've been here has really proven to be very effective in, uh, in reducing crime in a lot of the areas. Um, I have a few questions for you. Um, what is the reactionary time, uh, that your police have if a call, a nine-one-one call comes in?
I wish I can give you that answer. I don't, that's something I don't have, sir, with the, and it would probably be, I, I can be able to provide it for you, but we, you're going to be looking for, what is the average expected reactionary time for certain types of calls? So I don't have that number, um, and it also will depend on the time of day. It would depend on what are the calls are going on. So, um, there's an average that the nation has for a different type of calls to respond. I don't have that number right now, and I actually, um, but I can provide that for the council.
Um, my next question would be, um, how many shifts do you have? You have three shifts of police officers?
Yes, sir. So presently, um, there are approximately three shifts. I say presently with a caveat. Presently, there are three shifts, um, a couple of them overlap right now. Yes, sir.
And so at, at any given time, how many police officers do you have on the street? You, uh, you know, just-
So at any given time, right now, um, on that shift, actual officers, this is not counting officers who are on deployment or anything like that, um, twenty-six officers in the city.
How many?
Twenty-six.
Okay. So, so I ask that because just for my knowledge and maybe, you know, I just don't know. Um, how do you determine that we have enough police on the force based upon the population that we serve?
So, uh, it can be done a number of different ways, um, whether you compare, um, the needs, the, the response time. Like you said, we inquire in that manner. Um, but I'm responsible for trying to, um, use all resources before I can gauge that. So I said that, um, when you asked that question of how many I have right now, because I've actually been, uh, we've been looking at it for a quite time period, um, of the shifts. And how can we use the resources we have right now more better for deployment of personnel? So starting literally December thirty-fourth, I actually just sent the message out to all my officers because we've been evaluating the shifts and how to, to utilize manpower. Uh, we're going to twelve-hour shifts. We're going to twelve-hour shifts so that I can change that twelve-hour, twenty-six officers in the city of actual officers to forty-two officers at one time being in the city. So, um, we're going to, um, start that December thirty-first.
Okay, very good. Um, well, you think twelve-hour shifts will be good? I guess that's something that you have to see whether officers are burned out after twelve hours or not.
I've, I've done my best to make the decision based off of the balance of the calls for service, based off of being able to come and, and heighten a twelve hours as long, but making sure that there is balance, that there is not one shift, um, taking all the calls for service all at one time. They have a little bit of downtime and then the supervisors have discretion to be able to let some go as it gets slow, um, in the middle of the night, um, before the next shift comes on, so.
Yes. And finally, Mr. Mayor, two more questions. Um, training, uh, in community relations of training with police officers, uh, when, do you have that training and is there a thing called profiling? As far as when your police are out in the public, are they looking for certain, certain things, cer- certain type of cars? Certain, how, how do you, how do you, how do you train to do that?
They're looking for suspicious activity or, um, so let me make sure you're clear. Profiling is not illegal. Illegal profiling on criterias, whether it be the demographics of an individual or the demographics of a type of car. But looking for infractions, looking for suspicious activity, knowing what something look is experience of, um, of an officer when they're gauging to see what is that typical, um, uh, individual doing, stopping on the street where there are a lot of people? To be able to first start the inquiry, the conversation. And then that builds up for a reasonable suspicious, suspicion, and then that builds up to probable cause. So the first thing happens is the, the reasonable suspicion or the infraction that something happens before the next step occurs. That is constant training that is done. Yes, sir.
Okay. So you feel pretty good about the training you, that they get in that profiling, the legal profiling? There's no illegal profiling that's done?
I feel pretty good that, um, we are always monitoring our personnel, what they're doing and their action. Um, one of the other reasons for, um, the shift change is to make sure I have supervisor oversight. This is going to give a, a lot more unity supervisor oversight for each squad, um, that is constant. That, that way you're able to know your officers. That way you're able to know, um, because we have our camera systems, what is being done when they make a stop, what is the elements that they had this encounter? If they were just stopping just to have a conversation versus they're stopping for an infraction. I, I feel it pretty good that we are doing constant oversight and we receive any type of complaint and we do investigations off of any type of complaint, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Art.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Chief. Thank you very much. I know you've been thanked tonight, but I'm going to thank you again. Uh, and I'm going to challenge everybody in the listening audience, when you're out there and you run into these young and, young men and women in uniform, uh, take a moment and just thank them. It's a, it's a very important job they, they do every day, and, uh, it's a dangerous job. And we certainly do appreciate what you do for our community. Um, when we were talking about the numbers, oh, by the way, Chief, is your appearance here tonight the reason we got these interrogation lights going?
I said the same thing, sir. [laughing] No.
We got some bright lights going tonight.
Oh, my gosh.
Uh, just an attempt at humor, I'm sorry. Uh, the military, a while ago, uh, in the conversation about the aggravated assault stats, and those stats are certainly up and not something we desire, um, the, the subject came up about the military. I didn't see a demographic breakout in those numbers, and I want to be careful that we're not attributing things to our military partners that may be not attributable.
Yeah, no, we are not saying that whatsoever. And I said, in fact, we work very closely and we know the military does a good job with debriefing the personnel, um, when they come back from deployment. We are in constant, we have someone in our, um, comp stat meeting all the time in, in the, from the, um, from the base, so not at all. That's the reason why I'm creating the unit to see what's going on and why.
And let me, let me clarify, that was not, uh, an indictment against-
No, I know. I didn't take it that way, but I just didn't want the, the, the public to, to-
Yeah, it was basically as you proactively deal with it to make sure that we're covering all of our bases.
Yes, yes.
That was my point.
Yeah. Uh, because I, I do in fact know the military is very aggressive in their post, their pre and post-deployment, uh, activities to try to make sure that they mitigate any issues, uh, associated with domestic violence or, or, or violence, period. But with that said, uh, I think we have seen some recent examples of speed kills. Uh, and Chief, I want to applaud you and, and your officers for trying to mitigate this. One of the biggest complaints I get on a regular basis is speeding, uh, people complaining about speeding. I don't, just on our major thoroughfares, but, but specifically in our neighborhoods. Uh, and so just want to encourage you to keep up the good work of trying to, to tamp this down. I know you got a lot of things on your plate.
One of the, one of the technology things that, um, I put in, uh, to purchase are speed signs, because maybe a lot of people realize, may not know how fast they're going, so just try to get a couple more of those to put in the neighborhoods when we're not able to deploy the manpower. We could just put the sign, that might, that, that slows me down if I don't realize how fast I'm going just to have the sign up. So we got a couple more of those devices coming in for the police department.
Sure thing. And, and just, anything we can do to discourage people from speeding, uh, I, I certainly would ask that we do that. Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you and the council, I would move unless there's any other questions.
Yeah, I have a couple of, a couple more questions. And Councilman Dawkins, was yours a motion? Uh, I did see a second light, so I do need to go to Councilman Chris if yours is a comment. Second comment? Oh, my goodness. All right. Um, so I'll go to Councilmember Chris, but as he said that about the signs, I've, um, you know, I'll say this in full disclaimer, I've received several tickets in the mail from my daughter that is in DC because they have speed cameras, okay? And I know that, that is not popular, but it's certainly a deterrent for me to tell her that if I get another one, that she's walking, just. But Clifdel Road, country club is a, is a raceway, you know, and I worry all the time about people, uh, losing their lives. And so that may be something that you're familiar with it in other jurisdiction, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Councilman Chris.
I wasn't going to ask the chief a question. I was going to call the question, but you've got some other people that want to speak for a fourth time, so I'll yield.
Yeah, we're going to make it very brief, Councilman Dawkins, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my second go-round, um, so I'll make it quick. The hurricane caused you to move to twelve-hour shifts. A lot of our officers were tired. I can tell you, everybody on this dais was tired. We were all working fifteen, eighteen hours, whatever.
Yes, sir.
Um, so that was new information you just gave me tonight about twelve-hour shifts.
Okay.
And, um, so my concern is, are you going to look at this thing every ninety days and, and assess how we're doing? Um, because tired officers, um, can create situations that might be unpleasant. And, uh, because we want our officers fresh and ready to go, and, uh, that was not the case during the hurricane. It was very tough on our police department.
Absolutely, sir. And unless we have another, um, um, tragic event happen, there's not a twelve-hour shift that's going to be consistent that goes, um, for the time that we hit for the hurricane. The maximum days they would do in a row is three twelve-hour shifts in a row, but they will have every other weekend off. They will have every other weekend off, two days, two on, three on, but every other weekend off, they will have that, so.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Ms. City Manager and Ms. City Attorney, I apologize for getting on you about your phones. It was not your phone, so thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So I, I did hear, uh, call for questions. So was that a motion, Mr. Chris? Oh, oh, you were, yeah, that's right. Yes, sir. Councilman Art. Uh, now, I, I think we've got them all.
Everybody got them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would move that the council accept the report as presented by the police chief this evening.
There's a motion by Councilmember Art, second by Councilmember Wright. Any, well, we've discussed the motion thoroughly. Is that a vote, guys? All right, all right. Counsel, I'll look to you for votes.
Thank you.
Councilman, uh, Sergeant Major, need your vote. All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for all your offices and everything that you guys are doing. Good job. All right. The public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than thirty minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wi- Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here, if you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, we ask that you will reserve your comments until the public hearing. So, when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you would come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then, when you see the light, light it on the podium, go from green to yellow, you have thirty seconds to speak. When you see the red light come on, that means your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are not able to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, if you could call your first speaker.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, we have four speakers for tonight's public forum. Our first speaker is Mr. Larry Shaw. Mr. Larry Shaw. Our next speaker is Mr. Imam Iranami Mohammed Smith.
Menaces, long time no see, sir.
Greetings, everyone. You're supposed to say the honorable.
Oh, my apologies, the honorable.
Waalaikum Assalam, God's peace be upon everyone. I am Imam Imam Muhammad, the Imam of the city, founder and pioneer of Masjid Omar Ibn Said, and the Muslim community since nineteen seventy. Five Fayetteville State University Broncos student, and a Vietnam vet, by the way. I'm speaking very, very quickly, everyone.
Can you state your address for us, sir?
You can reach me at twenty-seven hundred Murkison Road here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm speaking very quickly because I have some very key issues for you all to celebrate. This is celebration. We had an election, and it was great, and it's fantastic, so I want you to celebrate. And I want to get rid of any fears. It's my job with my team, the North Carolina Legislative Black Caucus, to get any legitimate funding that you need, including an increase in the police chiefs.
Sir, excuse me, sir, can we have you pull the mic up just a little bit? We're getting a message that they want you to speak into the mic.
Are you the mayor? Okay, okay. All right, I got this. All right. Next, we want to get into the fact that Fayetteville State University, my school, went to the CIAA football championship. Championship, all right? And we really got to support them stronger. We got cheated, by the way. The other thing is, my team, the North Carolina Legislative Black Caucus, helped me, as well as President Barack Obama helped me. We brought in forty thousand generals and officers from the state of Georgia in the last five to seven years. And in that, it's five billion dollars, not five million dollars, five billion dollars that we helped bring in. And that helped develop the two ninety-five business loop going around the city. It also helped, Secretary of State, the main marshal, with the building of the baseball stadium across the street over here, that's part of my work as well. Also, I want you to be aware that it's very important for the city to get behind the voting polls and things of that nature. One of our good friends in the black community, one of the richest black women in Fayetteville, went to E. Smith to vote, not this year, but last year. She had a difficult time getting to the bathroom. The poll workers did not want her to go to the bathroom, which is sitting right behind them at E. Smith High School. She just got back from Dubai. Plenty of money. You cannot discriminate against rich people. All rich people are not bad. Some are, some are real bad. Okay. So, let, let it also be, let us also be clear, Murkisonville needs to be beautified. The circuit case store that's being put there, we need security there. Some of those circuit case stores, they do bring in a magnet for crime. The number of African-American, black Americans working at my baseball stadium, that as I call it, across the street, needs to be fifty-fifty. It should be fifty percent African-Americans doing the construction and fifty percent white Americans. It's, that's what it should be. And others can get a share, but we don't want to discriminate. I do talk to the people, and they feel they're, they've been slighted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Willie Williams. Mr. Willie Williams.
Mr. Williams, how are you, sir?
Good evening, good evening, counsel. First, I want to say you're doing outstanding job, outstanding job. And I hear a lot of upgrade, oh, Simpson Street, and also our property on Augustus and Louise Circle by that bridge up there. But anyway, I want to say, I'm from the Community Awareness Alliance. And who we are, we are a group of concerned citizens that take on issues of the city. We talk to the people in the city, we get the information out to the city. If there's wrongdoing, we try to correct it, bring it to whoever the necessary people are, maybe a city council, county commissioner, whoever. And we're doing outstanding job. But I hear tonight, there's a lot of things going on, upgraded stuff going on, but I haven't heard anything about the downgrade. People, the people less than us, they're homeless. That's what I'm here about. Okay, I've never been homeless, but every time I lay, lay my head on a pillow at night, my heart hurt for the ones that don't have any place to put their head. No place to wash their body during the day. Now, I understand through some meeting and talking to a lot, I come in contact with a lot of homeless, and a lot of them want to come down here with me. But I feel like I could do it better alone, I'll tell you what I have to say, to say what I have to say. I understand that there's some money being allocated for homeless center. Is that true? Okay. Was it alloc, what I need to know was if it was allocated by the federal government or allocated by the city council? And if it was, if it's in place, when would this homeless center be erected, started, or when it would be ended? And number two, if the council, if there's a change in the council, will this money that's allocated, is it possible that this money can go away? Is that possible?
We'll answer, let him.
Okay. Number three, if not, then who are the liaison person that we can go through? Because we are really passionate about this thing, and we're going to get on this thing like big time. We have, we're not hearing any information in the street anywhere about this homeless center, or self a little bits and drabs. And it seems like the homeless has forgot, you know, we have forgotten these people. And every day you ride down the street, if you're any kind of Christian, your heart hurt for them. My heart hurt for them as if I'm out there. And I've never been homeless, but I feel like I'm out there every time I pass one on the street. And we need to get something, do something for them. If it's no more than a place they can go take a bath or wash their clothes, they're pushing shopping carts all up and down the street with all their belongings on them because they can't wash their belongings? And I guarantee you this, when you build this big multi-million dollar ballpark, they would be out there. If we don't have someplace for them to park their stuff or to go and wash their bodies or whatever, they would be out there begging, and they will make us look bad as a city. So, this homeless center, can we get something started by it or something?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. What I'll do is, maybe city manager can have one of his folks talk to you about the day center, is what I think you're referencing, and they, they can answer a lot of those questions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you can also see me, I'm the liaison for that committee as well for city council in the county. So, I'll, I'll talk with you on that, you can get in touch with me.
All right, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Donald Bennett.
Thank you for the cheer. Good evening. I live at fifty-eight forty-four Apartment C, Chasin Ridge Drive. Good evening, Mayor Coleman and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present on behalf of the Sean Nicely Marine Corps League Detachment nine eighty-three Toys for Tots campaign. And special thanks to council members Jensen and Waddell for extending the invitation to speak to you and the community about Toys for Tots. I'm Don Bennett, an associate member of the Sean Nicely Marine Corps League Detachment nine eighty-three of Cumberland County, and the local community organizer, or better known as LCO, for the Toys for Tots two thousand eighteen campaign. My companions this evening are Ms. Rhonda Quadar from the Salvation Army, and Spencer Sichter, who is our adjunct at the detachment. The Sean Nicely Marine Corps League Toys for Tots Unit works closely with the Salvation Army of Fayetteville and the Cumberland County and Robinson County Departments of Social Services, specifically the foster care units in those two agencies. All new unwrapped toys donated to Toys for Tots are directed to the Salvation Army's Angel Tree Program and the children in foster care. The Sean Nicely Marine Corps League seeks local businesses, churches, community groups, service organizations, fraternities, sororities, and others to host Toys for Tots collection boxes or hold Toys for Tots events where they will collect toys new and unwrapped. Last year, the Sean Nicely Marine Corps League Toys for Tots Program assisted the Salvation Army by providing gifts to over twenty-five hundred children from infant to sixteen years of age, and almost nine hundred children in the Cumberland County Department of Social Services Foster Care Unit. Some children under the CARE family Violence Program and the Work First Program also received gifts. And please notice, I said gifts, not toys. Not all donations received from our generous residents and donors are toys. Many have gone and put through, and put thought into their donations by giving items related to learning in math, reading, and STEM, or in some cases, STEAM. And we are, and the Salvation Army and the Cumberland County DSS are grateful, as are the children who receive these gifts. We also thank some of our sponsors and supporters here in Fayetteville and Cumberland, including Ryan Honda, Lafayette Ford, Mission BBQ, and Cape Fear Valley Health, PetSmart, Fayetteville Inn by Marriott, Hendrick's Toyota, and Hendrick's Chrysler Jeep. And these and other Toys supporters are listed on our Facebook page. On your sheets and handouts I gave you is the website where agencies and other people can sign up to donate Toys. Thank you for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Great job.
May we have no further speakers?
Thank you. All right, item ten point zero one. Bond order authorizing approved sale of issuance, PWC revenue bond, series twenty eighteen. Hello, sir.
Hey, Mayor, city council. I need to read the title of the bond order, then I'll be asking for a motion and approval for the Fayetteville PWC Revenue Bonds Series twenty eighteen. This bond order authorizing and approving the sale and issuance under the provisions of the State and Local Government Revenue Bond Act as amended of not to exceed ninety-five million aggregate principal amount of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina Public Works Commission Revenue Bonds Series twenty eighteen to provide funds for the financing and refinancing of various electric, water, and sanitary sewer capital improvements and directing the authentication and delivery of the series twenty eighteen bonds.
So, let's tell, we do have a couple of questions, and I have one as well. When we authorize these bonds, it typically appears on consent. Is there any reason why it was separated?
Because the, the general statute asks to have this paragraph read aloud, so we wanted to make sure we captured that.
Okay, all right. Councilman Hare?
Mayor, I was going to make a motion, sir.
Have Councilman Dawkins, I'll come back to you after that.
I was going to do the same.
Oh. Well, it looks like a first and a second. Is that a first by Councilman Hare, a second by Dawkins?
Well, I hadn't read it out, but yes, sir, that, that works.
All right, well.
Yes, sir. May I like to make a motion that we authorize the bond and approving the sale of the issuance of the PWC Revenue Bonds Series two thousand and eighteen?
Okay, yes. All right, as a motion by Councilman Hare, second by Councilmember Dawkins, any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous?
I've got something to say.
Yes, sir.
I moved to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.